Okay, so our meeting. Oh, there we go. We are now live and recording.
Okay, great. Are you double hearing me now?
No, no, we just hear you off my phone, so it's perfect.
Oh, yeah, okay. I'm still getting the unable to join. Okay, great. I'll just be on the phone then. Alrighty, well then, if, do you want to start then, or should we wait a minute for Phil?
I don't, I haven't, like I said, Phil is not able to make it tonight, and I haven't heard from Jason, so he might show up, but we are scheduled to have our budget hearing first, so we should probably open her, yeah, open, open our budget hearing, and then we'll see if we have any public comment, which I don't think we will, and then we can close that and then join our, our regular board meeting.
Thank you. Alright, that sounds good. Well, would someone like to make a motion to start the, the meeting?
I'll make the motion. Bailey seconded.
All in favor? Alright, okay, so we'll do our pledge of allegiance and then kick off.
With the hallway, our hallway repairs, our flags have been removed from the library, so we, we pledge allegiance to the flags out in the hallway. So we, we probably need to open our hearing, see if we have public comment, and then close the hearing officially.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting, open a public budget hearing. Open for any public comment if there are any.
And we have nobody in the library that is here to make public comment, nor have I been given public comment by anybody else. So we can, so we can now close our meeting. Yeah, now we can, we can go into our regular board meeting and consent agenda.
So, I would like to make a motion for the, approve the consent agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
And thank you for the workday calendar for the secret tenant.
Oh, no, no worries.
Again, do you have access to an agenda in front of you, or do you need me to kind of walk you through it? Okay, you.
So Nicole is onsite this evening, so she's gonna lead the board in a budget presentation for the 25-26 school year.
So this is a presentation on the 25-26 school year. The next slide here, the five different funds that are available to Eastern School District, and description of what is allowed in and out of each one. We have the general fund, capital projects fund, debt service fund, ASP and transportation. We didn't make any big changes since next year's budget, we just tried to kind of roll with what we've been doing similarly. So the projected enrollment for 25-26, we budgeted at seventy-nine point two-seven plus four running start kiddos, which our twenty-four, twenty-five average enrollment was eighty-three point oh-nine, so we're budgeting about the same enrollment as we ended this school year with. This leaned on Aaron Ford, he knows the kiddos, he knows the families in the community, so he was able to help me budget that number, and we felt pretty good about that. For revenues, we have levy collections estimated at point-two-zero for one thousand. We increased the funding for M-Plucks due to the legislative session passing that on to all the schools. We get a two-point-five percent IPD on all of our funded positions. And so on the expenditure side, we passed that same two-point-five percent on to all positions, whether they were funded or unfunded. And we increased our expenditures by the new bargaining agreement that had some additional root cycles in there. And we are continuing to run the preschool program, and we also budgeted five-hundred-thousand dollars for capacity, which would allow us for new grants or any new unknown expenditures or revenues to flow through our debt. The next slide is the financial summary, you'll see all of our different funds there. The goal line is what we budgeted for twenty-five, twenty-six, and that's over our budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. So if we were to spend everything that we budgeted in our budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, will end at seven-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand dollars, which is a little bit under where we are budgeted to end. The next slide is a slide on our enrollment history, so you'll see what our enrollment trends from twenty-one to budget twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So it's a little bit inconsistent, but budget and actual are pretty similar. And then here's the summary of our levy, in February of twenty-twenty-two, we passed four-year EPNO levy, and that's our collections for each year. And due to the levy cap, the legislative, what we're allowed to collect, not collect, we're not, we're not collecting that by about two-hundred-thousand dollars. And then you'll see a graph there of what we are our twenty-sixth for salary. And then there was our capital projects fund levy that we don't have anymore. General fund summary, this is basically the same report that you get monthly. It looks a lot like our budget status report there with our revenues, overhead expenditures, and our ending fund balance. And that first column is our actuals from twenty-three, twenty-four, and then the middle column is our budget for twenty-four, twenty-five, since we haven't ended our current year yet. And then our budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, you compare what we had for actual, or what we, how we budgeted last year.
Any surprises or anything out of the ordinary there?
Yeah, please stop me and ask questions, and if you have any, sometimes hard to remember them at the end and circulate. And for me, the next slide is just our general fund revenues following the same format. You have your actuals in the first column from twenty-three, twenty-four, and then the middle columns are current year budget, and then, and then the last column is our future twenty-five, twenty-six budget. The next slide is our revenues in the graph, so you can see that the largest part of our budget is our state revenues, and a lot of that derives from our enrollment. Our, our enrollment makes up that big piece of the pie there for a portion of dollars. And then the next slide is our general fund expenditures, following the same format as previously, by program there. Now, if you get farther into the years, you'll see some of those. All of the, the S R dollars, I've been deleting the S R lines out of the history because they're not even showing up on history anymore. And then the next slide is our expenditures by activities, so it breaks them down into our teaching and our teaching and support and other supports. Same format as the previous slides. A lot of numbers, sorry, it's not as exciting, but you can see eventual numbers.
I love numbers.
So then you can see that sixty-one percent of our budget is on teaching and learning supports, seventeen percent is other supports, and twenty percent is our central administration. And then the next slide is the same information, but broken down by object, so this is where you'll see our salaries and benefits. And so our salaries and benefits make up about sixty percent of our total budget. And then our five through ninety-two column, which is our supplies, purchase services, and travel, make up thirty-nine percent of our budget. Next slide is our N-Stock statement, this is required to be in our presentation. This is saying that we, we mounted the state of stock funding is two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. We are budgeting to spend eight-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars, showing that we're having a deficit from the state, state by five-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand dollars.
Seems, seems to be a bit of a problem.
Basically, yes, it's up here to show you that we're not fully funded, which they say we are.
And they require this report.
The next slide is the summary of our capital projects fund, following the same format, where you have your actuals, and then current year budget, and future budget. That revenues we have in there are nine-hundred-and-one thousand dollars, so I do have a five-hundred-thousand dollars for simple state grant budget in there, not knowing that we're gonna get one, but it allows us to receive one and have expenditures without going over budget. And then four-hundred-and-eleven thousand of that is our, our theme energy.
Yep, we will be applying for the Healthy Schools, Healthy Kids Grant for new gym floor.
Okay, yep, perfect. And then, since we still have some levy dollars in that fund, I also have a line there that levy fund projects, so we are allowed to spend those dollars without going over budget.
And that's five-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand for the seventy, right now fifty-five thousand.
Debt service fund, this is the next slide, this is basically just an in-and-out fund for us, we don't really care much about the balance in there. We transfer our, current year, we're transferring our bus payment into our debt service fund, and then it gets transferred out of our debt service fund. And the next slide is our ASP. And this just has a bunch of capacity in it, as I didn't have a chance to sit down with the kiddos and see how much they actually wanted to spend in each one of those buckets, but I do have plans to do that, so I use numbers that they had given me last year and then inflated them, so if they were to spend more or receive more, they would have the ability to do so.
Oh, really cool. Thanks for talking about that.
And then the transportation vehicle funds, I have budgeted to start the year higher than than where we have money in it now, as due to a transfer that I'm hoping to transfer into the transportation vehicle fund there. After listening to some transportation, getting more information around school buses and transportation, it'd be nice to have one bus, all the buses that we're currently running for all of our routes on, when one falls off the depreciation schedule, have another one on there, so that in the future, we can always buy a bus with cash. And right now, we only have one bus that's on the depreciation schedule, so the revenue we're receiving from the state isn't enough to buy a bus on our own without having to finance it. And then the next several. And we do have a bus payment.
I think it's on the, the prior bus, yeah, yeah, the, the last bus we just bought was, was at, was cash, yeah.
Okay. And then the next several slides are our four-year budget, and it's really hard to budget out four years, considering we didn't have all the information for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. So what I did to come up with a four-year budget plan is I added two percent more to our current revenues, and I added two percent more expenditures to our current expenditures. And if there was a year that we dropped some FTE under the enrollment section, I tried to decrease the revenues and the expenditures by the amount I decreased the FTE, so if we went down a teacher, then I took out the expenditures for a teacher and the revenues that we would have received for kiddos in that class. But that's pretty much just how I plugged the four-year projections there. It looks like you put uniform.
They require you to do a four-year budget.
Yeah, so if anything, yeah. Anybody have any questions?
So federal funding that we're placing.
Yes, so we in Eastern are actually not in that bad of a situation, because we currently don't have a lot of federal revenues anyways. We have Title II had a couple thousand dollars in Title II for certificate staff to receive P D, and we have about ten thousand dollars in Title IV, which is student support and academic enrichment. And we, I think we're still getting some of that Title IV. We won't be getting any Title II, which was just that small couple thousand dollars. But in twenty-four, twenty-five, they did not give us Title I dollars, because we missed it by three kiddos in Census Dad, so we were not able to have any Title I dollars this year, but on OSPI's website for twenty-five, twenty-six, there's this spreadsheet out that gives us our estimated revenues for Title I, and it's saying that our estimated allocation for Title I is thirty-thousand dollars, going to have that in our budget.
So they're taking away some, but giving us other federal dollars. And Nicole, you are up with our, just our regular monthly financials as well.
So then we, this is our cash balance, and it's showing as of June, that our cash is at nine-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand eight-hundred-eight. So we're still above the origin line, which is our point-per-cent minimum fund balance policy, and that does reflect the purchase of our van, and that is why you'll see that decrease there from last month. This is our general ledger trial balance, these are the GLs that I tie to the county treasurer everyone, and we did not have any discrepancies in. This is our county treasurer's statement, this is what I balance my GLs to, that shows our ending cash, or warrants outstanding and everything there.
Yes, yes, yes.
This is our budget status report, showing that we are, have received seventy-one percent of our budgeted revenues, and we've spent sixty-eight percent of our budgeted expenditures, and then our ending fund balance there is nine-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars, which is the twenty-five percent ending fund balance.
So financially, we're looking good.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Nothing out of the ordinary or no red flags.
Perfect. Nicole, would you mind hanging around a little bit? We got a couple of reports, but in case the board has any questions about the adoption of the budget. Awesome, thank, thank you. I have an update on the strategic plan. If you remember, we started this last year, that you know, trying to get some community input and staff input to what we want Eastern School District to, to look like. So Jessica Lewis put this draft together for us, it's certainly not finalized, but would like the board to take some time, maybe between now and the next meeting, to kind of see what how that fits with what we want and the vision of the board, but you know, basically, these are the, the main categories, that, you know, from the survey data of what we want to, you know, strengthen, and what we want to then obviously monitor and see if we're meeting those goals of class sizes, small school, and, you know, increase in our academics. So I, I won't waste the board's time by reading all, all this, but there is some basically four goals for us as a school district to, to monitor, which I think are, are good goals, but again, this is for the board's review and maybe further discussion when, during our next, next meeting, so just a quick update on that. Yeah, we, we, when we finalize it, we'll make it look all pretty and put, you know, Eastern graphics on there and pictures of our kids doing good things, but that was just kind of a a baseline to get it out to the board to review.
I love it, I love the addition of talking about parents in there too, so.
Good. In terms of the superintendent reports, a question was asked about the, the loss of federal funding. This is kind of a, a chart that shows the, the amount that we will be losing, which is that twelve thousand, ten thousand in academic support, and another couple thousand in, in, in teacher development, so, but on the flip side, we're gaining thirty-some thousand in, in title funds or struggling student funds, so, which is a good thing. But OSPI did a nice job and made a little kind of map of where, you know, the darker the color, the more federal funding you're losing for twenty-four, twenty-five. And they also did the same thing, another map for loss of federal funding in twenty-five, potential funding in twenty-six, twenty-seven. And this could impact us more, this is up to thirty-four thousand that we potentially could lose, but none of that is, as you know, if you follow the news at all, things seem to change day by day at the federal level, so I wouldn't put a grain of salt, or take this with a grain of salt, as things may change, but that's for next year and beyond, so. Not as dire as once thought, but, and I didn't even know about the lap allocation, or excuse me, the title allocation that Nicole had just mentioned, so that's really good news for us. Also in my report, we're getting, you know, prepped to run a levy, I included some levy information from one of the vendors that, you know, helps districts run, run school levies and bonds. This is Piper, is this Piper Sandy, I think, or Piper Sandler, excuse me?
Yeah.
So there's two main ones in, in the, in the state, this just happens to be one of them, but you can see there our history of our elections here in the district, that for the most part, we've always passed our maintenance and operations levies with, you know, a couple of exceptions that, that happened, you know, it's like, you know, twenty-some years ago. Bonds, a little bit tougher to, to pass. And you can see those dates there in the nineties and early two thousands, but hopefully with the school, small schools modernization, we'll be able to take care of a lot of the things that, you know, we, the district wanted to get taken care of in some of the bonds, so. The thing that probably was most interesting to me, and what, and the reason I really wanted to share this with the board was our, our current tax rate in comparison to, you know, like districts, and bear with me as I scroll through, but here's the assessed valuation of our district, you can see in the last couple of years, we had, what, fifty, what, fifty-eight, fifty-nine percent assessed value growth, which definitely impacts the, what taxpayers are, are paying, but, you know, our tax rate in comparison to, you know, other districts in Kidde Tass and Grant County, Yakima Counties, we are, you know, at the bottom, which is good news for our taxpayers. But something, something that the board might want to think about in terms of running the next, the next levy is if we can go full collections, and here are Eastern compared to, you know, like districts with like assessed values. So we're definitely at the, the bottom of the scale, again, which is good news for our, our taxpayers, but, you know, are we hurting ourselves by not collecting as much as we could to, you know, then provide more for our kids? So it'd be something that we can talk with one of the, the companies about as we decide if the board wants to run a, another EPNO levy, so just thought I would want, I wanted to share that with the board, so. But I was pleasantly surprised about the, our tax rate.
I think we have a very pro-school voter base too, so.
Well, and I think once they see that our tax rate compared to other districts, they'll see that, you know, we are good stewards of their tax dollars, and you know, we want the best for the kids, and, but there's also is a difference between what we need and what we want. And right now, we're, we're getting what we need, and, you know, it's up for the, the community to decide those wants, go above and beyond. We do have a new air filter or air sensor for forest fires that was installed by the DNR, and just click on it, and you, you can kind of see where, whoops, see where we are. Zoomed in too much here, whoops, there we go. I know, I'm, I'm getting there, let's see. Now it's not wanting to cooperate like it did, but that's, whoops. Well, anyway, if you, yeah, we're gonna put this on the website, you'll be able to click on it, and you'll see Eastern, and it'll give our air quality, you know, like, put this in no charge for us, so that was, that was a nice thing that they have done for us, so. That'll be up on our website, and the last thing in my report is, we are still going through our audit, Nicole and I were just chatting about that. Haven't really received any, you know, feedback to any kind of significant feedback, couple of things here and there that we could certainly, you know, increase with what we're doing with accountability in some of our board minutes, and, and we will, but nothing, I would say nothing real significant at this point, so. And with auditors, no news is good news, so knock on wood, so. Yes, I think we've already spent close to eight thousand dollars on the review. Yep, and we'll probably get another bill for another eight thousand. Okay. It's quite, quite, quite the racket here, we're gonna, we're gonna come in and audit you, but yes, you're gonna pay for it too. It's a great business model. And with that, I have, that is my report, but I will turn it over to Mr. Brennan with the maintenance and operations report, and at the, the look of our library in our hallway, it has been a busy month.
So we had a water leak through one of the cooling coils. Water primarily just in the hallway there, the hallway out here. Damage was limited to just the flooring, a little bit of water. There, you think you got, you know, everything coming out of there, the process. That's good news. As far as measures taken, once we discovered the leak, that's right there. Current progress, we're working with Bellford Property Restoration, they're the ones. They're doing a great job making good progress. Insurance has said that they'll absorb the cost of the cooling coil repair, which is nice, because it's not, so they said because it was sudden incident, it falls under our coverage, so. Cost of that, there. Lead drinking water progress, I have installed filters. Lead and drinking water progress, I have assault filters and the faucets I have elevated levels. You said also have new faucets on order. So I did that this week. Faucet, again, that faucet is not used very often. So not something that the kids have access to. That one had the highest levels of lead likely because of the water sitting in faucet. Sitting in there. Lead content, the faucets I did purchase are reduced lead levels within federal and state guidelines. Finding a true lead-free faucet is faucet. So I worked with, I just looked at the specs for currently have. As far as the other three faucets. Gym floor replacement, asbestos testing has been completed on the floor, gym floor as well as weight room. I had these two locations tested, the nine by nine tiles, the asbestos. We currently use rubber matting over some tiles on the faucet or anything. As well as the gym floor, the gym floor does have asbestos. Concrete, so I'm working on getting estimates as far as what that's going to cost to have the asbestos disposed of within the gym. As far as the weight room goes, I'm just taking measures to make sure that it's sealed. None of the asbestos is friable, it's all crystalline asbestos. So even if the tiles got broken, it's not getting puffed up in the air. It's just something that I want to make sure that it's skilled saw to to make it. But as far as measures taken with the weight room, we can encapsulate it or subflooring. Right now, the plan, I think, is to try to encapsulate it. Plywood surface over it just to protect it. I'm working with IRS Environmental currently. So yeah, so as far as the gym floor goes, the next steps for that, now that we know that there's asbestos, about 1% to 2% of the flooring material is asbestos. But it'll essentially have to have. Clean concrete pad. Can't be an expensive process. It just really depends on how these, the adhesive is all worn out. So again, working with IRS Environmental and working with Don Stinback. Deep Sound Public Solutions, he's got to help me out through the process as far as. As soon as I get those estimates in. Outdoor ed and athletic storage sheds, those that have been purchased were brought in. Initially, the plan was to build 10 by 20 shed. What our Kidda Task County does, consider us a big commercial facility, therefore anything over 200 square feet. So it saves some dollars like all old shit, which what it does is increase the storage capacity as well as protect. Shipping container. Mold are excited, it's health risk, but the storage sheds will have installation. Access to the equipment, students and staff and security. So that's something that will have. Opening up the wall in the weight room, contact Kidda Task County Community Development. So we do not require a permit to remove that false wall as long as it is not a load-bearing wall. I've confirmed that it is not a load-bearing wall, therefore we can't, as long as it doesn't fire the sprinkler system. So we'll go ahead and open it up and that'll increase safety for students, increase visibility for staff members supervision as well as allow all right, drain field update. So this has kind of been a two or three month saga with the drain field. Trying to locate Hasbell's records, Kidda Task County. Health Department does not have any records of it. The Department of Health has no records. So currently what I'm doing is I'm working with Brown and Jackson. Their their septic drain field department of that became out, Mr. Tyler Schmidt, he's the owner of Brown Jackson. Came out. Subject system or drain field. He's going to help me with the new Hasbell so we can submit that to the state. How we can get our required as a two. For that drain field. Another question at hand though is, is it a lost drink for a large onsite septic system? Is it an onsite septic system? That's been the question. Brown and Jackson believes that it is a large onsite septic system, working with the civil engineer with ADC Water. He does not believe that we require a loss system. So he's going to contact Mr. Andrew Jones with the Washington State Department of Health and see if he can't get us classified as onsite septic system. This reduces complex complexities as far as the athletic and what we can do with that septic system. Generally, a lot, large onsite septic system requires quite a larger population than our school has. So the Department of Health for Washington State, where they question whether it was a loss system because they, your school is big enough size to even have a loss system. So they're questioning why we would have it. My guess is they were anticipating for much more growth over the years. So that's not a bad idea, but complicates things if you want. So if we can get to an onsite septic system, it opens up possible but also add it with the service of the school this year. Moving on to our transportation report, we've received our new district plan. It works awesome. It's a great investment. As far as safety goes, it's on form. So actually, it should feel quite comfortable. Excited about it. It's going to also increase opportunities. Pressure available. That any teams really should we need to rent, it's generally probably that'll increase our opportunities.
We know more about septic systems than I think we ever want to know.
Welcome to my daily struggle. I use all the health department. Do you have a septic system? Do you have an Hasbell? Well, no. But there's clearly a house on here. But we don't have that.
Yeah, my favorite was them asking me to ask the owners of the facility to be Hasbell. Why would I be asking you?
It just wasn't, it didn't, you know, that hat can't, it must have torn when they tried this.
It's, it's, it's there.
This is following them telling me how seriously they take loss systems within Washington State. And then informing me that they have.
Welcome, welcome to the struggle.
Any of the board members have reports that they'd like to share, information they'd like to share? No board member. Okay. Well, we can move on to board business. And find the right resolution. Yes. Here it is. Forgot where I had it. There is resolution number one. Resolution number one is basically adopting the 2526 operating budget for Eastern School District as described by our business manager, Nicole Courtney.
I will make the motion to approve resolution number one, 25 dash 26.
Thank you very much. Resolution two is moving some funds from general fund to transportation vehicle fund. Like Nicole had mentioned earlier, having two, at least one bus in depreciation. So we're trying to future proof our district and set aside some funding for a future school bus. Nicole, is there anything else we need to add to that?
Yeah, I just added, I did look up our amortization schedule for whatever bus we purchased in 2019. We borrowed $5,000 and our last payment will be June 1st, 2029. So currently, the depreciation money that we are collecting in all this, so the bus that, the one bus we have on the project is making this payment. So this was in a better situation than we need to get.
I second it.
Thank you very much. The last resolution is a declaration, emergency declaration. If you recall what we did for our septic a couple of years ago, same thing. This will hopefully allow us to gain access to the emergency funds through OSPI. Not a guarantee, but
Someone's like to call that your first day.
Yeah, that was a I I couldn't, there's lots of puns that go with that, failing septic system and me coming on board, but
I will make the motion to approve resolution number three.
Thank you very much. And we have a couple other second readings of policy 1315, which is here. This is basically just taking our operational protocols and putting them into board policy as per WADA's guidance. And the second is dealing with complaints, whether those are internal or external of having a a policy and procedures that basically are, I guess, procedurally relevant to what was to want. So I would ask the board if they could approve those as well as second readings.
Make the motion to approve policy number 1315 and 527.
I will second.
Thank you very much. We now will have an executive session for approximately 15 minutes to discuss professional negotiations. That's right. So. 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 So.
I think that is.
Oh, yes, thank you, thank you, Jeff. Oh, yes, thank you, thank you, Jeff.
We are back from executive session.
Again, all right, well. Someone make a motion to resume the regular meeting?
I will make a motion to resume the regular meeting.
For the district, sharing of any good news?
It's summertime?
It's summertime, we're going to have some nice new flooring, that'll, that'll look nice. You know, I think between the Healthy Kids and Healthy Schools grant and an ADA grant because of our bleachers, we might be able to leverage those, but we'll, we'll see, I mean, worst case scenario, we do have quite a, you know, bit in capital projects, so that can be a decision we make down the road, but again, it's used every day by every kid in the school, so, and. Nineteen sixty. Yeah, I, I mean, we've probably gone over the lifespan because it's been taken care of and maintained very well, but it's, it's time, especially, you know, those bleachers themselves.
Those bleachers have been turned over a few times.
Yeah.
Finished, but it's still mostly original.
Yeah, they are, it's, it's time, so I'm hoping we can at least leverage one grant, two grants, or we'll see, partial grants, yep.
From the other job I have up the road a little bit by Jen's house, we have a new sustainability manager, the current, the former one, Tara Louder, moved to Georgia, so we have a new one, her name is Emma Hoskins, and I will bring her down and introduce her once Mr. P comes back because she's really interested in outdoor education and all that stuff that we do, so she's just like Tara, she's a very big supporter of it.
Awesome.
I'll bring her down, show her the schools, introduce her to Mr. P, Mr. Commble.
That'd be great.
And, yeah, so.
Speaking of Mr. P, I had a meeting today with the new CTE, Career Technical Education Supervisor from the ESD about us and where we can go from here, and, you know, we'll start with Mr. P because he has that background from his time in Alaska, and that will allow us to not only get enhanced funding, but also state of the art curriculum and support that, that he needs, so, and after that, we'll work on, on math, so math and science is where we'll start, and we'll see where it goes from there, but very productive conversation, gentleman, I think his name is Jeff Cochrane, used to be at Sigla, he, he knows CTE and will get us, get us there, so I'm excited about that, it'll be, be a good, good thing for us to embark in. I know Jay's, Jason's very much a proponent of CTE, so that'll, it'll be, it'll be a good thing to, to share, share with him. Yep, absolutely.
The only reason I know it's Tuesday is because I'm sitting here.
So, yeah. Do you have anything, Jen?
I'm just hoping that our, all our folks are out there getting lots of, out there, time to shine and, and heal and be ready to just thrive when they come back to school.
I've seen kids out everywhere riding bikes around town and it's been, it's been a cool summer.
I'm not getting lots of emails from staff, so that means they're out doing what they should be with their, with their, their family and enjoying, saw some little ones over in the playground today, this afternoon, so that's.
Every time I go to Mountain High, it's inevitable, but I will see at least a couple of the high schools.
Yep, that's awesome.
And it's always when I am in the scrubbiest clothes and they look at me like I am not a human being, and they're like, who are you and what are you wearing?
Do I smell like horse food?
Yes. Yes, I am a human being, I don't just miraculously.
How, how did the, the Cascade one hundred go?
The Cascade Crest one hundred went actually really well, the winner this year broke the course record by almost fifty minutes, he completed the race in seventeen hours and five minutes.
Holy moly.
So that was, he was holding a pace of about a ten minute, six second mile through the entirety of a hundred miles.
Good golly.
But it, it, it went really well.
Good, 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 good.
So, yeah, and I think, I won't speak for them, but I, they were looking at maybe donating some money to the school.
We had a, we had a nice donation last year and.
They're looking at doing a similar thing this year.
Much appreciated, so, good, glad it went well.
They, they've changed their, who they donate money to, they donate money to who supports them, so.
No major injuries or anything?
None to speak of.
Good, good.
Yeah, speaking of donating money too, we, we do have a lot of people interested who, with some of the last minute fundraisers that have come up, they haven't really had an opportunity to be able to donate with cash or check, so I don't know if there's a way to have something set up, maybe like a, like a Venmo or. Where they could, where we could have an account where people could donate electronically a little bit better, especially when we're advertising online through social media.
Let me ask. Let me ask Nicole, I know there's some regulations about things we can do with Venmo and things like that, but I will put that on my to-do list to see what we can do. It, it is very handy, I use it with my kids, it is handy. So I, I will look into that and come back next month and, or maybe even earlier with the, see what, see what we can do. Let's, let, let us get through this audit first. That's all we have on the agenda. Thank you, everybody, thank you, thank you, Jen.